Okay, we're gonna, can everybody online here just raise your hand if you can hear? If you're paying attention, there we go. Okay, we're gonna begin, I'm gonna start with a couple of opening remarks. Yesterday, the Massachusetts Moderators Association had their annual meeting virtually. The main topic of the day was civility. So, across the seminar, civility was addressed. And I gotta tell you, in terms of our usual annual meetings, we're already handling a lot of what was recommended. We're gonna skip some of that today. We're gonna skip the pledge of allegiance, we're gonna skip any kind of music, both of those things were mentioned. But was, what was mentioned over and over again was explaining to the group how this works, and I think everybody knows. What?
You may be first.
Okay, maybe I got too far? So, we've got four articles. The select board will be presenting the articles one by one. We'll open for discussion. Key players will open the discussion, possibly from the select board or the finance committee, and they will open it up to the floor. You'll see there's a microphone in the middle of the room. We have many people outside of the tent. People in the tent can approach the microphone. There's a very awkward-looking baggie on the microphone. That will be used for each speaker. Peg will be the baggie monitor. And then if someone outside the tent wants to speak, there's still some seats here, guys, we'll bring the microphone over to you. Given the fact that we're under COVID conditions, not the best, it's raining, it's cold, keep your comments brief. Remember, we are in the midst of voting yea or nay on these articles, these motions, and we wanna make it as succinct as possible. If you agree with a prior speaker, just say so. Say "I agree," and let's move on. So, with everybody, just make sure I've hit everything. We do have a quorum. And I've gotta read the opening thing, I'm gonna take this off just for a second, 'cause I'm fogging up. "The return of the warrant indicates that it was signed by majority of the select board and publicly posted, ensuring that statutory and related legal requirements have been met, allowing us to gather here this morning and officially conduct our meeting." So, the meeting is now open. Onto the business at hand. Do I have a motion on Article 1?
Yes, Mr. Moderator. I move that the town will vote to appropriate and transfer from the Hampshire County Retirement Account the sum of $63,247 to fund the group insurance. So, let me just explain briefly, if I could?
Yeah.
Thank you. So, you may or may not recall, at annual town meeting, a question was raised, rightly so, that the appropriation was quite a bit higher, that was being requested for the Hampshire County Retirement, and there was a question about why that was. We didn't really have a good answer. We did pass it, but we went ahead and investigated the reasoning, and it turned out, they made a mistake. So, we did not have to pay as much as we thought, but the money was already appropriated. In the meantime, what we're asking to do is to take some of that excess money, which was in excess of $100,000, and transfer that money to the group insurance account, the reason being, we have some additional employees taking insurance. So, it's really that simple. We have extra money because of the mistake, the mistake was not on the town's part, and we're just asking to move some of that money to pay for group insurance.
Further discussion? Come to the mic, please, and name an address.
Susan Charbock, to Curtis Road.
You gotta get a little closer.
Susan Charbock, to Curtis Road. Just a question, the additional employees, without naming them necessarily, or anything else, can you, just what type of employees, you know, highway, police, whatever?
I don't actually know if we have the answer to that.
Joe does. Joe, you got a mic?
It's pretty well across the board, on both highway, Town Hall, and school. And there was a little bit of an increase in what we felt, or what we knew at the time at town meeting of what the insurance cost was, and then the ultimate MIA quote was a little bit lower at town meeting, and it came in a little higher.
Thank you very much.
Just when we appropriated town meeting, it's always kind of a crapshoot, because open enrollment is in the fall, so you never know who's gonna take insurance and who isn't. It's obviously, we can't stop people from doing that, so we do our best to estimate what we expect, usually based on the prior year. Sometimes it goes up, sometimes it goes down in the fall.
Any more discussion?
Just let me add this. This is the spreadsheet that we track every employee who's on the health insurance, or, and, as you can see, it takes up a whole page. And we do the best we can at town meeting, and as Charlie said, open enrollment, and new hires happen after town meeting. So then, this is adjusted to what it is as of a week ago, and it still could change between now and the end of the year.
Further discussion?
Can I ask a question?
Yes. Mic, please.
Come to the mic.
Could you remind people that there's chairs up?
Yeah, yeah.
Dana, hang on a second.
Just a quick question.
No, no, name, address.
Dana Potter, 365 Huntington Road, Worthington, Mass. Ready?
Yeah.
Just a quick question, do the employees contribute, or is it a benefit?
They just pay both.
They contribute.
They do. Thank you.
Further discussion? Just sitting down. Okay, I'm seeing just about everybody signed in, so this'll be a voice vote. All is in favor of Article 1, do so by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Passes unanimously. Article 2, do I have a motion?
Yes, Mr. Moderator. I move that the town will vote to amend the General Bylaws, Section 3, Appointed Town Boards and Officers, by replacing the words "a recreation committee" with the words "a parks and recreation committee."
A second?
Second.
Can I address part of that? The reason for the name change is actually very simple. There are certain grants that we could be eligible for if the word "parks" is in the name, but we don't have it in the name, so we're not eligible. So, we're saying, if we put it in the name, we might be able to get some funding that will help us do what the Recreation Committee currently does. So, that's all. It's just to make us eligible for funding.
Further discussion? Hearing no further discussion, we'll move to a vote on Article 2. All those in favor of Article 2, do so by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Passes unanimously. Article 3, do I have a motion?
Yes, Mr. Moderator. I move that the town will vote to appropriate and transfer from the Conwell Stabilization Account $96,000 to repair the RH Conwell roof.
Second?
Second.
Seconded?
So, when the warrant was posted-
Hang on, hang on. Do I have discussion on Article 3? Yes, go ahead, Charlie.
Sorry, when the warrant was posted, it just said a sum, it didn't have a number. That's because the bid opening was literally Thursday, and we did have four bids, and the select board's actually meeting next Tuesday, outside of our normal round, just to approve the bid, and that's the number we'll be, we'll most likely be approving at our next meeting. But, obviously, we need to request something, and that's what it's based on.
Further discussion?
I have a question.
Okay.
Nestor Matthews, 24 Tescro. So, is this related in any way to the interior work that's gonna be happening, or the painting on the school, or is this a all separate issue?
This actually is addressing a leak in the roof. There is a leak in a section of the roof. I believe the insulation is already wet in there, which means it's no longer functioning as insulation. So, there are two parts. We asked that the bid be broken into two parts, and everybody complied. The first part is called an emergency repair, to repair that leak for the winter. If they're not able to get the materials, or if they don't have the time to do the whole repair, they're going to do the emergency repair. If they have the time and materials to do the rest of it, they will fix the whole thing, and weather. Yeah, so it's, the interior project is something that will, we have to put out to bid, and that will probably, if we're lucky, we will have bids that don't stun us again, and then we can bring it up at annual town meeting. But the last, we did put that out for bid last year, and the bids were so much higher than what we had anticipated. I don't remember the exact figure. Steve might, I mean, I almost feel as if they came in twice as high as we had thought they would. So, it was absolutely stunning, and we said, wait. At that time, the cost of materials was so high, so we thought, perhaps it'll come down. But that's what this is, it's just to fix a leak and to repair the rest of the roof that is in question.
Yeah, I'm gonna step aside and become citizen, just for two minutes, and I'll let you know when I'm back as moderator, but to add to that, the roofs in question are the flat roofs that were not replaced a couple of years ago, and one of them is probably 30-plus years old, and flat roofs in this environment are very tough, so they're two areas that need replacing that are beyond their warranty. So, it's the flat roofs, one of which has been leaking for a number of years. Okay, back as moderator. More discussion? Hearing no more discussion, we'll move on to a vote on Article 3. This is gonna, two-thirds correct? Okay, so we're gonna do a voice vote first, and then, so, on Article 3, all in favor of Article 3, do so by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Passes unanimously. Onto Article 4. Do I have a motion?
Yes. Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to appropriate and transfer from the general stabilization account the sum of $48,686 to purchase and equip a new 2022 Chevy Tahoe police vehicle.
A second?
Second.
Discussion?
I'll hold on to my leg when I sleep. I think I'll be all right. Yeah, this is what old people get. Anyway, my name's Richard Mansfield. I live on West Street, 256, and, well, I'm gonna oppose this, but first of all, I wanna be, like, very grateful for being able to be, like, a part of this decision. You know, a lot of things can go under the table and stuff, I'm glad this has come to the front, and I think that the finance committee and you guys need to be recognized for the honesty that you have. Now, so, okay, here's my spiel. I remember when we got our first cruiser, it was Grant Knapp, he was the chief, and he said he was tired of people throwing up in the backseat of his car. So, we got a cruiser, and it lasted and lasted, and then we had to get another one. So, we replaced that, and then, we never got rid of the one we replaced, and the next thing I know, we're trying to replace it again, with no vote on, like, making the decision to have two cruisers. That vote was never, we were never given that opportunity. I think it was an oversight, and I kinda don't like that. But anyway, we did vote twice not to get a new cruiser, and it just kept coming back. The third time, it passed. So, here we are again, we got a wrecked one, and we're trying to replace it, but it's a lot of money, and I don't wanna see that happen. Thank you.
Can I address that?
Yeah, we're gonna hear from the select board next. Amy?
Okay, so, I do wanna say that we never had a vote that said, "We're going to have two cruisers." But there was a vote in town meeting, it had to do with a, following a specific situation. I believe it was, it was some sort of accident, as I recall it, and it required closing off the road from two sides, which you cannot do with one vehicle. Police vehicles are designed, it's sort of weird to say this, but they're meant to be hit. They're meant to be a protective thing, so they position the police vehicle to protect the fire vehicles, which are extremely expensive. The cruiser is far less expensive. Hopefully, nothing gets hit, but at least this way, if something gets hit, it's the police cruiser. But you can't close a road with only one vehicle. There was a recent incident on my road at the far end of town, which was actually handled by the state police, because the police chief was not, he was away when it happened. They closed off my road. Now, what they were investigating was actually a quarter mile past my house, so make it a mile and a quarter into my road. You can't leave your vehicle at the top of my road and walk a mile and a quarter into the site of what you're not really sure what it is. It turned out not to be anything horrendous, but they didn't know what they were looking at. There is a reason for two cruisers. We have more than one policeman. We have some part-time policemen, we are looking for a full-time policeman as well, aside from the chief. To only have one car, one vehicle, would require that then, any police officer responding who doesn't have the cruiser, responds in their personal vehicle, and if something happens to their vehicle, the town is liable for that vehicle. It's also, there's a lot of implications about it, and so, we all know for your insurance, when you fill out your car insurance, it says, "Do you use your vehicle for business purposes?" All of the policemen would now have to say yes, which makes their insurance go up. You know, that's, are we paying their insurance, then? You know, there's a lot of reasons. So, I understand what you're saying, Richard, and I believe the first time, when we were voting for a new vehicle, I believe I voted no. That's a long time ago, but we have, the police vehicle we have now, the chief's cruiser, is a relatively new vehicle. The other one was probably only, Bob had said it was about $3,000 in trade-in value. We got, actually, about $24,000 for it as an insurance claim. So, you know, we were going to have to replace that anyway. The waiting list for vehicles is extremely long, but we're hopeful that we can get a vehicle. There's no guarantee that we will even get the vehicle that we want at this time. And obviously, if we appropriate funds, and they are not spent, they stay there, they don't go anywhere. They don't just get spent because you appropriated money to be spent. I hope that answers some issues, but we did decide to have two cruisers by authorizing a second one.
Okay, we have more discussion from the select board member?
Hi, Steve Smith, 196 Huntington Road, and I'm back here because I made the mistake of playing golf with someone who tested COVID positive last week. The, there's another reason why I think it makes good sense for Worthington to have two cruisers, and that is, that we, for the first time in years, have a police chief who not only lives in town, but who believes that his most important duty is to respond to call-outs in the night. So, he's available to us 24/7. The downside of that is, it means that he needs to keep the cruiser where he lives at night, and it's just not, you know, your response time, he lives in extreme west Worthington, out near the Peru line, and the additional time to respond, to pick up your cruiser, and then perhaps go back to the same locate, you know, the same part of town, is really not desirable. We are a town that needs two vehicles. We could argue, and I have raised the point about the need for the type of vehicle, Amy has given you the reason for that, and the fact that we live in a town with more than half of our mileage is on dirt roads, which are normally in good shape, but sometimes when we need police cruisers to respond, it's because of heavy rainfalls and so on, and the roads get washed out. These are four-wheel-drive, heavy-duty vehicles, suitable for use on all of our roads in town, and I think we need to do it. Thank you.
More discussion from the table here? Joe?
Joe Boudel, Finance Committee, on Ridge Road. I just wanna clarify a little bit what Richard said. I understand when you're getting old, as your leg fell asleep. I understand what happens when you get old. Also, sometimes your memory is affected also. So, that is the reason, that is the reason, that is the reason why I put everything down in writing. In, on June 28th, 2003, we bought the first police 4x4, which was the Ford Explorer. That's the time where I think we kept the Crown Vic, and nobody, you know, realized that we're going to have two. On May 2nd, 2009, we bought the first Tahoe, and that town meeting had a discussion, because we had the 4x4 that was replacing, and that discussion ensued on, do we need two police cruisers? And although maybe the vote wasn't, do we want two or not, by appropriating the pay for that Tahoe, town meeting voted that it wanted to. It did it again on May 4th, 2013, when we replaced the Tahoe with a 2013 Tahoe. Again, we had two four-wheel-drive police cruisers at that time, and when we replaced it a second time, the town meeting voted, I would say, affirmed that it wanted to by appropriating the money to replace one. And we did it again for the most current one, on May 4th, 2019, when we purchased the current newest Tahoe. Again, there's over 10 years of having two cruisers at the time, and it has been affirmed at town meeting over and over again, by replacing them and not having a specific vote whether or not. Now, that doesn't say that you can do it differently tonight, or today, by, you know, by appropriating or not appropriating, you're answering that question. And I'd like, again, just to say one more thing about the need for two cruisers. Whether we wanna amend it or not, there, when the chief or another police officer answers a call in the middle of the night, and goes and knocks on somebody's door, if that's a domestic disturbance, it is dangerous. A second cruiser allows a second police officer to be backup to that first person or responder on the scene. This is not just because of ice storms, it is to protect the police officers by having them available to be able to respond, and not respond in their personal vehicle, especially if it was raining in a snowstorm. They can get to the scene and give assistance to that first responder. Thank you.
More discussion? Mic, please. These guys are first, well, Scott, if you, so...
Cynthia McGraw, 135 Williamsburg Road. I'd like to say two things. I think we should reflect the true cost of the cruiser. I know that we're appropriating $48,000, but we got some money, I assume, for the wrecked cruiser. I'd also like to encourage our police officers, I have to assume that somebody was speeding, and they need to exert the same kind of caution the rest of us do, it's an expensive, it was a very expensive crash, and all that money comes out of all of our taxpayer dollars, and we did a vote for a new cruiser, I agree with that. We wanted to save the old one, and I think that the police in Greenfield evidenced to us that a little less speed in responding is sometimes better, because that officer, wherever he was going, obviously was incredibly delayed arriving.
Okay, two things, I'm gonna, I think we already had an answer to the first part, I'm gonna let Amy repeat that.
As far as the speeding goes, is that-
No, no, the cost and the trade-in.
Yes, the cost, yes, there was, the insurance settlement, I don't remember the exact number, so I apologize, but it's roughly-
$24,000.
It's roughly $24,000. I think it's, you know, a little bit different, a little bit higher. The actual cost, that is deducted from the actual cost of the cruiser. This $48,686 is the cost of the cruiser, less the $24,000 and whatever, leaving us with 48. So, the true cost is about, is over $70,000. So, yes, you're correct.
You know, again, I'm going to slide off the moderator for just a second, and then maybe Bob can add to this, and the total cost includes upfitting the vehicle, so Bob, do you have comments on that?
Sure do.
Mic, please.
Bob Ranky, 104, 1054 Old Dark Road. First off, I'd like to talk about the officer that was in the crash. He was responding to an incident in Chesterfield to assist with an erratic operator that drove to a fire scene. I told him, I actually work with this officer in another town, and I have to tell him to drive faster going calls, he's too slow. With that being said, I told him the last thing, don't be the first one there. When he came down the hill into the Chesterfield side of, well, got over the Chesterfield line, he ran into very, very thick fog, trying to clear the wipers. It was a day that was like 100 degrees, we just got done fighting the fire. He couldn't get the fog off the windshield. He turned on the defrosters, turned on the wipers, and then the wheel went off the road. He hooked one of them barriers with wire cage and the rocks. The car only went about six feet after that, and it never crossed the center line. He called me on the phone, 'cause the radio didn't work, I immediately called state police, because I wasn't taking that call, that needed to be investigated by somebody else. State police sent out the recon team, they did the investigation, thought he was not at fault. On a side note, that same night, another person from town drove off the road, and we didn't find him for four days. He drove off the road in the fog. So, telling me that my officer was driving too fast, without any information about the thing, kind of upset me. That officer puts his life on the line every day. He was actually on the fire hose at that fire, dressed just like I am, ammo, guns, trying to assist a citizen. He called me at my home, wanting to go into that house to rescue a cat. I told him, "Absolutely not, we have zero training. Stay at the door." When I got there, he got on the hose with me, and we fought the fire. So, I take very much offense to this. Select board knew about the accident, they knew about the reports, and that's all I have to say about that. As far as the cost of the vehicle, they're up right now. This vehicle was about $14,000 more than the last one, 'cause they can't get them. GM opened up bidding to buy vehicles, commercial vehicles, from, for the dealers, from August 27th to August 30th. They shut it off without telling us. Only two dealers in the state have any. We are earmarked for one of them. If we don't get it, we don't get it. That's the size of them. They're just not available, that's why they're so expensive. The other thing that you guys don't know is, is all these details, you see that cruiser out? I charged $15 an hour for that cruiser. Over the last, since I've been keeping track of records, which is March of last year, we brought in $26,000 in cruiser rental. So, that alone, between that and the insurance, now, the new cruiser will be insured for replacement costs, because MIA does that free charge. We didn't know that, nobody knew that. You just have to ask for it. So, next time, if something happens again, which this cruiser is meant to be crashed, it did exactly what it was supposed to do at that crash, it saved his life. He had a cut on a finger. If he had been in something else, his own personal vehicle, we'd have been going to a funeral, and this would be a whole lot worse. So, anybody that saw the cruiser would understand, even the tow truck driver was like, "He's alive." It did exactly what it was supposed to do, crumpled, so it looked terrible. So, I got sidetracked here, but-
He's a great crew.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, guys. But the cruiser at my house gets me a way to get to the scene faster. If it's not, I have to come to the station, I have to pick it up at the station, and then go to the call. It'll have to stay there all the time, so in the middle of the night, it just doesn't make any sense. I am on that side of town, my pager does not go off, so I don't get a tone until two or three minutes after the initial call, it comes through on my phone, so I'm already three minutes late. This is just my way of catching up, so. Anything that I forgot to answer on my tire?
Uh, no, I think you're good, I think you're, more questions may come up, but-
Thank you, I appreciate all you-
Okay, we had two more commenters, and again, let's have some respect for the people standing in the ring. And again, let's have some respect for the people standing in the ring.
Hi, I'm a good person, Tom Yaratinchak, 69 Codward Road in Worthington.
Yeah, closer to the mic, please.
Okay, like this?
There you go.
Okay. So aside from all of the things, I just want to remind us that last time you were at the town hall, we agreed, not all of us happily, to hire more police and not give money to repair tables in the school that were problematic. We clearly don't have unlimited funds here in the town. And I just think that thinking about a $75,000 vehicle is crazy to me. I think that if you want to spend that for you personally, that's a personal decision one can make. But as a town, it feels crazy. I too am on call and have to drive in the middle of the night for my job. And I go all over Massachusetts, Vermont, and Connecticut. I go in the winter. I do all of that. I have a car from 1976, and I do it just fine. I'm not suggesting that we have a 1976 police car, but I am suggesting that we can do better. And I also think that if we don't have availability and cars are $14,000 more than they're supposed to be because of lack of access currently, then maybe we should wait until the prices change again and we have a different supply after COVID has run its reign and the shipping and all of that has changed. Thank you.
Okay, Scott, I think we missed you. Yep, Scott's good. Further discussion?
J. P. Welch, Old Post Road. And I kind of reinforced what was just said as far as a you a potential used vehicle. You've all made a good argument for a second vehicle. Then the other answer I would like to get is there's been talk about, I believe it's in June, that the police force has to have extensive training. Is the town of Worthington going to be able to even have a second officer because of that training? So those were two questions.
Yeah, and again, that is a straying from the scope. But I've a feeling Bob wants to answer it. And and after that, let's let's get back to the topic at hand, because the training and the future future policeman is beyond the scope of this this article.
It does, if we don't have an officer, we don't, a second officer, we don't really need a second vehicle.
Okay.
We actually have four other officers, and they will still be here. There's a bridge academy they'll be going through. We are still trying to hire another full-timer. Not sure how that's going to work out. We're actually going to be putting an ad out in the next couple of weeks to try and get more part-timers as well, because nobody has time anymore. So if we want coverage, we're going to have to hire part-timers. Whether they work four hours a week or 10 hours a week. The full-timers, we're going to have to work on. Anybody that gets hired now or that that we hire at full-time has to have the full-time academy, unless they're bridged through. So that's that's a big expense, you know, and for somebody part-time to tell them they're going to do 240 hours of training this year, take three weeks off of work, because 120 hours is going to be in person. It's going to be three weeks. So for the officers that you've got working in this town that do it part-time, they got to give up a lot. So as far as the cruiser, it that we're kind of tied on this Tahoe, because that's what we run. It's a great vehicle in the winter. I can attest to that. I've driven it in some of the worst storms we've had. I did get some pricing. I found out there was a new deal that just opened up on a Explorer. It is cheaper than they are available. And it is a hybrid. But I I've driven the Explorers. They don't handle as well in the snow. But I just wanted to put that out there. Somebody wanted to make a motion, we could go that way. Okay.
More discussion? Yep, two more.
Hi, Kelly Wolf, 35 Parrish Road. I agree, the argument for the second cruiser has been made, but everybody's problem is with the price tag. Have they looked into any kind of? I see towns that have second-hand cruisers. I saw that that North Hampton donated cruisers to Smith Vocational for their criminal justice program. I mean, there's obviously trade-ins somewhere. Could we look for other options to maybe put the money into outfitting a second-hand cruiser?
Hang on, let's say the last comment, maybe. Did you want to comment? I'm going to let you comment, but maybe he can respond to both.
Heather Dufrain, Thrasher Hill Road. I'm just curious if having the two police officers or having the two vehicles saves us money from calling the state troopers in? Like if we if he's not available to get a call or go to a call, are we saving money by having our officers available and not having to call the state police? I'm just curious if that's saving us a little bit of money somewhere, having them more available instead of calling the state police?
I don't believe we pay the state police for for calls.
But it's response time.
It's response time. They're in Russell.
I'm just curious if having the two vehicles available made us saving money in calling in the state police for help?
Doesn't save money. Saves time.
Okay. More discussion? Can you go to one more discussion? We got a got our quick quickening things up here. Must be old, yeah. Something about the maybe the ground here.
John Faison, Indian oven road. This is clearly a very hard decision. There are arguments on both sides. I think that the town is being pressed for good reasons, for a lot of money to be spent, not just for the cruiser, but the school has become an expense. The what's the other big price tag? What do we have?
Well, that's later.
The senior, the senior center is is going to come up for a vote. And this is a special town meeting. And it sounds like there's a lot of good comments, but it sounds like maybe we don't need to do this until this spring, until it's clearer what this is going to cost and give the town more voice. There was a criticism, I think it continues, on the roundabout in town that not enough people knew about it. And now there's a discussion, I understand, to maybe try to take it out at an expense. So I think there's.
Yeah, we're going we're going off again, so come on.
Okay, well, the point is that we need to be a little cautious about spending our money. And I think this right now is not being cautious enough.
Okay, thanks. I think Bob wants some comments.
When this first happened, we did do some research on trying to find used cruisers or get donated cruisers. It's against national law to donate a cruiser to a police department. We did find some that we could buy. Most of them needed bodywork, had over 100,000 miles on them. That's exactly what we were getting into in the 2013 Tahoe. I was actually coming in January with a finance committee to get rid of that Tahoe, because it was going to start costing us a lot of money. So we're going to be in the same boat. We could spend $20,000 outfitting it, fixing it. And then in three years, I'm going to be back asking for another one. So Joe Boudreaux and I talked about it. And he said, just don't spend any money on anything yet. Let's go to a town meeting and find out if we can get one, and then we'll go from there. So it it seemed to be the most appropriate. And as I just said, there's a Ford Explorer out there that is cheaper. So I mean.
Right, what, how much cheaper, Bob? I'm sorry, but how much cheaper?
My my, the quote I got, I talked to the guy last night, because this company is just starting up, and it's 58,000 total for the cruiser. That's before our insurance money. But that does not include a cargo box in the back, which I definitely need, because I go to all the fire police calls. So I need to be able to keep equipment in it. The other one did include that. So apples for apples, I can't really tell you that exactly. But I can tell you that if you just vote on getting a new cruiser, I will get the best for your money. That's what I do. I'm not going to buy something that we don't need. If I can find it cheaper and it's reasonable, this is all-wheel-drive, it's a hybrid, that's going to save us fuel. Like I said, it's not my first choice. If that's what you guys want to go with, I'll do that. I have no issue with that, because it's my money, too.
Is the Tahoe a hybrid?
Tahoe is not a hybrid.
Okay, Joe wants to speak?
There has been a lot of comments about the cost. And I just want to remind you that the the town does have a replacement policy or a capital plan, and that is by keeping a high number in the general stabilization fund. So right now, there's 1.3 million in the stabilization fund. And the point of that is to be able to make replacements for anything from cruisers to 10-wheel dump trucks, so we do not have to hit the tax rate or borrow from our friendly banker. So there is funding for this with ease. And the the point of maintaining that stabilization fund is to allow you to do that and have it not impact your tax rate. I understand there's sticker shock. If 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 I were to buy a new pickup truck, I couldn't believe the prices on it. And I think you're looking at that. But it's coming out of our savings. It's not hitting your tax rate, and it's coming out of the stabilization, which is meant for this.
More discussion? Okay, hearing no more discussion, we'll move to a vote. All those in favor of Article 4, do so by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.
So we had some some nays. Do a count? Yep. Okay, so we're going to have to do a count. You guys all have your vote cards. We'll have to decide how to split things up. I'll do outside. I'll walk around outside.
Okay.
Yep, so this is for for aye votes. Hold your cards up clearly. Catcher will count inside. I'll count outside. Okay, you're good. Okay, all those opposed, hold your cards up clearly. Again, the same deal. Yeah. The vote is 42 to 29. That does not bring us to two-thirds. So Joe is doing some some math there just to confirm that.
For the pass, you have the double 29.
Yeah, didn't make it. Okay, that's it for today. Thank you all for coming out, all the stalwarts who stood outside. Do I have a motion to dissolve?
No move.
All in favor of dissolving, do so by saying aye. All those opposed? Thank you. See you again in May.
Could you please return your vote cards back in the box where Camille Smith is? Thank you.